I need a motion to excuse if he doesn't join us before.
Counsel, before I call the roll, just a reminder to indicate your physical location, including the county and the city you are located. Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Here, I am sitting in Ypsilanti in the county of Washtenaw in the state of Michigan.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Present, Washtenaw County, Ypsilanti.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present, Ypsilanti in Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson?
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan? Councilmember Simmons?
Present in the city of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Present, city of Ypsilanti, county of Washtenaw.
With six present, there is a quorum.
I'm moved to excuse Councilmember Morgan.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, all of the in favor of the excuse?
Aye.
All right, it carries. All right, Clerk Kalinka, it's on you.
Counsel, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the agenda, support.
Removed and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the agenda, I believe I heard from everyone. Did I hear from you, Mayor Pro Tem? On the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I just didn't, didn't know. Okay, the agenda motion is approved.
Counsel, moving on to the next item is public comments. Members of the attendees list will have three minutes to address counsel. And the first individual with their hand raised is Larry. I will allow them to speak now.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. I'm again speaking to city council regarding the North Valley Alley, North Huron Alley. By way of history, in September 2009, I met with the city and requested the city deal with the balcony obstruction that the cleaners built in 2008. Since 2008, the neighbors stretched to interfere with the lawful use of the alley have intensified. It is now eleven and a half years since that meeting, and the city has done nothing about any of the obstructions. This is a long time to wait for public land to be restored to public usage. Yes, layers of complexity have built up over time, but the greatest hindrance to resolution is not those complexities, but the city denying any responsibility. Responsibility for its part in causing and/or allowing the obstructions. Responsibility to deal with the increased impact of the instructions, obstructions because of the additional changes made by the cleaners. Hopefully, the city document I sent earlier today unequivocally proves the city is not doing what it can and should do to address these. It clearly is not doing what it told the court it was doing. It is not diligently exercising its available options to deal with the private construction on public lands. I assume you are tired of hearing about the North Alley, North Huron Alley, as I am worn out appealing to the city to do the right thing. This is not Mr. Yap's personal problem. This is a city and a neighborhood problem. Please compel staff to deal fairly and swiftly with the current alley obstructions. Please return these public lands to public use. Thank you.
All right, counsel, there are no other hands raised in the, on the attendees list. Give a, oh, there we are, Desiree Simmons. I'll allow them to speak now, and you'll have three minutes to address counsel.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. This is Desiree Simmons. Just wanted to share a couple of quick comments. One, I'm happy to see the HRC getting some new members so that they'll be able to meet. Also happy to see other councilmembers nominating folks. I'm happy to see that. Also, just wanted to say too, I saw that one of the goals is around having someone to start a mental health response team. And I want to say I support that. There's so many good models to look at, like those of Kahoot and others elsewhere. I also saw that there's interest in creating a warming space. And I'm hoping that folks are already planning on connecting with the YPSY gathering space and the folks that are, that have been operating the rotating shelter in Ann Arbor. I hope that that's obvious, but I just wanted to name that. And then I, of course, affordable housing on there, so I can't wait to hear about and see what specifically moves you all are going to be taking for that. And then I also saw just a couple of sustainability things on the poll, so I wanted to just say too, that I'm excited that I'm able to work with Brian Foley on the resilience hubs as part of our work with the Sustainability Commission, so I'm happy to see that make it onto the goals list today. That's all for tonight. Thank you all.
Thanks, Desiree.
Thank you.
Counsel, doesn't appear anyone else has their hand raised, or we can wait a moment to see if there's any other comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we can move on to the next section of the agenda, which is presentations. And there is a proclamation regarding Gun Violence Survivors Week. And Mayor, I understand you have someone here to speak towards this. If you'd like me to read the proclamation, that's fine, but I will leave that up to you.
Would you please read it? But I also do, we have Celeste, and Celeste, you have to help me with your last name. I've tried to work on it the last three days, but without hearing it.
You can just call me Celeste K. Mayor Lois, it's okay. It's Camperwalla, just like it's spelled, Camperwalla.
Camperlala, okay. All right. Andrew, would you read the proclamation, and then we'll hear from Celeste, please?
This proclamation declares the week of February 1st, 2021 to February 7th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Survivors Week in the city of Ypsilanti, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and uplift the resilient voices of survivors across the nation. Whereas every year, nearly 39,000 Americans are killed in acts of gun violence, and nearly 85,000 more are shot and wounded. Whereas by early February, more Americans are killed with guns than are killed in our peer countries in an entire calendar year. Whereas a gun violence survivor is anyone who has personally experienced gun violence, whether you have witnessed an act of gun violence, been threatened or wounded with a gun, or had someone you know and cared for wounded or killed. Whereas forms of gun violence can include, but are not limited to, gun suicides, gun homicides, domestic violence involving a gun, shootings by law enforcement, and unintentional shootings. Whereas 58% of American adults, including 68% of Black and Latino Americans, are someone they care for, has experienced gun violence in their lifetime, demonstrating the reach and impact gun violence has in a community across America. Whereas firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens. Whereas Americans in cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence by advocating for common sense gun safety legislation. Whereas by commemorating National Gun Violence Survivor Week on February 1st to February 7th, cities across America will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives stolen by gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ypsilanti declares February 1st to February 7th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Survivors Week. We encourage all citizens to support their communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Thank you. Celeste, if you would like to talk to us for a few minutes about this, about Gun Violence Week and Gun Violence Survivors, and thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me to be a part of this meeting and for issuing the proclamation. It means so much to us. You know, I think all of the statistics and all of the information that is in the proclamation kind of speaks for itself. The fact that there's 58% of Americans can claim to be gun violence survivors is such a staggering statistic, and the fact that, especially in the times that we're facing right now, in COVID times where people are very much alone and quarantined, suicide is on the rise. I myself am a survivor of suicide, and my friend Gwendolyn, Gwendolyn LaCoix is a survivor of suicide as well. Her son Jonah shot and killed himself when he was 17 years old. And so I just want to hold her in my heart this week as well, and her son Jonah. And I've realized through my journey as well, that not only am I a survivor of suicide, my dad took his life with a gun when he was 57, but I'm a survivor of domestic violence as well, because my dad was abusive before he took his life, excuse me. And, and so there's just, there's so many intricacies when it comes to, to gun violence, and people will often say to me after I've spoken to them, that they realize that they themselves are, are a survivor too. And so we just want to really lift up the voices of us survivors this week and make sure that people are aware. I've got my We Can End Gun Violence orange shirt on here. Orange is the color of gun safety. And so that's something that we at Moms Demand Action, just I think above all else, want to, want to really amplify the fact that we are all about gun safety, and we want to honor our survivors. So I do know Gwen had a message. First, I just want to say that Gwen has been doing amazing work with the city gun violence program that she's working on in Ypsilanti, and she's doing a lot of research and trying to figure out ways that we can really cut down on gun violence in the city of Ypsilanti. And so I just really commend her for the work that she's doing. She just picked up 200 gun locks today. She wanted me to pass on that word, so if anybody can benefit from that, please let us know. And I think that's really all I wanted to say. So thank you so much for having me here today, Mayor Lois. I really appreciate it.
Thanks so much for coming, Celeste. I know that, as I read your proclamation, I've heard you now for, what, two years at the Park Ridge table, or maybe longer, and had never thought of myself as a gun violence survivor, but in reading your proclamation, it just hit me that I am. And I think that, as you said, so many people do realize that when they start hearing and not really, not necessarily having acknowledged that before or recognized it as such. But I do appreciate you and all that Moms Against Guns, or I know.
Moms Can Action. We're not against, we're gun safety.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say gun, gun violence. I didn't finish. Yeah, but anyway, thanks so much for coming. And you have your proclamation, and this week is, has been designated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Halanga? Or did anyone, I'm sorry, before we go on, did anyone want to comment on the presentation?
I just wanted to thank Celeste for coming. Hi, Celeste. It's nice to see you.
Thanks, Annie. Good to see you too. Thanks for coming.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Halanga, we can go on with the agenda.
Just pardon my tardiness, everyone.
Oh, welcome. We move to excuse, so thank you for.
So counsel, the next item on the consent agenda, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, but prior to moving forward, Councilmember Morgan, could you announce present physical location?
Present, Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilcoxon, everyone else.
Thank you.
Moving forward for the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2021-017, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution Number 2021-018, approving the minutes of January 26, 2021. Resolution Number 2021-019, approving appointments to boards and commissions. Resolution Number 2021-021, approving project manager Bonnie Westler as the alternate representative to Woma.
I shall move.
It's been moved and, and supported. Any discussion?
No discussion on the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Kind of the point.
All right, with the, for the roll call, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to Resolution Number 2021-021. Counsel, the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city regulates persons, firms, and corporations who sell, offer to sell, buy, or offer to buy goods, wares, produce, fruit, vegetables, or merchandise upon any public right-of-way in the city pursuant to Ypsilanti City Code, Chapter 94-193. And whereas said state trunk line highways within the city are under the jurisdiction of the Michigan Department of Transportation, here and after, referred to as MDOT. And whereas Public Act 1 of 2005 requires that certain businesses, such as sidewalk cafes, must receive a permit from MDOT to conduct such activities within the right-of-way of any state trunk line. And whereas MDOT requires, under the act that the city passed, a resolution supporting the activities described above and committing to enforce MDOT sidewalk cafe permits. Now therefore be it resolved by the Ypsilanti City Council authorizing persons, firms, and corporations to sell or offer for sale or display or attempt to display for sale goods, wares, produce, fruit, vegetable, or merchandise upon any state trunk line highway in the city, so long as said person, firm, or corporation has secured a permit for such activities from MDOT, and the same comply with the City of Ypsilanti Code section set forth above. Further resolved that the city shall enforce compliance with the MDOT sidewalk cafe permit. Further resolved that the authorization set forth above shall remain in force and affect so long as the permitted activities do not create an unsafe situation and do not interfere with the transportation along any state trunk line highway in the city of Ypsilanti pursuant to Public Act 1 of 2005.
So move.
Your motion? I heard, did I hear you, Councilman, Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I moved it. Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Presentation, I see Mr. Jacobs has joined us.
Hey, Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you.
Good evening.
I have a very brief RFL for you. Each year, many restaurants in YPSY choose to offer outdoor cafes along MDOT trunk lines. Those are primarily Michigan Avenue, Cross Street. This year, MDOT and the MLCC will require updated resolutions from the local municipalities who must regulate that right-of-way activity. And as the battle against COVID-19 rages on, we know the need to continue using sidewalk along MDOT trunk lines to support restaurants in the overall, overall districts in 2021 is very important. We know there's going to be indoor capacity restrictions, and some businesses not located in the areas of street closure and those without rear access are left with sidewalk cafes as their only outdoor dining option. We're asking counsel to update the resolution. We've renewed annually, but now are required to get a brand-new updated resolution for, in 2021, due to MDOT and the MLCC. Any questions? I'm happy for you to consider this.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Jacobs? Do I see your hand, Mr. Wilcoxon? Yeah.
My camera's doing strange things. I don't know. Yeah, I do have questions. So with this program, I was under the impression that there was a fee for the permits to do the sidewalk cafes. Is that true?
There is.
And so with the closing of streets, I mean, are those businesses that are taking advantage of that also charged for the permits to be in the streets? I just want to make sure this is equitably administered.
Yep, so in all of those circumstances, those participating in the street closures also participate in sidewalk cafes. And so they pay for the sidewalk cafe. The DDA, according to the resolution that was passed last week, is paying $2,500 for the pleasure of the street closures. There is no additional fee for a street cafe that's handled separately from the sidewalk cafes, which do have a permit fee associated with them.
Is that permit based on square footage on the sidewalk?
I don't believe it is, but Joe Meyer's department, the building department, handles those fees, and so I'd have to refer to the fee schedule. I don't believe it's based on square footage, but Joe, please jump in if I'm wrong there.
No, it's one, it's one permit for sidewalk cafes, period.
And so the, I just want to make sure I have this straight, the sidewalk, so the people participating in the streets also have a sidewalk. So they pay for a permit for the sidewalk? They pay for a separate permit for the street as well?
Permit that they use for the street is under the DDA street closure permit that was issued last week for total of $2,500. The DDA doesn't ask for any money, and the city doesn't ask for any money beyond that from businesses for that pleasure.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, Steve, just to kind of, the rationale for the permit, as we go out and make sure there's still going to be ADA compliance, so regardless of the size, as long as there's ADA compliance, we are good at the building department. So that's why there's, like, square footage doesn't really matter, because it's literally just, can we, we need to make sure that there's very free access.
Yeah. Thanks.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Morgan?
Is, this is for, when you're thinking about a sidewalk cafe permit, is this for any goods, any goods or anything being sold on Michigan Avenue? Like, there's a hot dog, like, if it was a, like a hot dog stand, that person would need a MDOT sidewalk cafe permit?
That would fall under a different permit, the temporary food concession permit.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would have to operate in right-of-way potentially, and then the business who is hosting that would need to acquire the MDOT permit, maybe? Although it's not technically a sidewalk cafe, so it may only be regulated by the temporary food concession.
Right down here on Michigan Avenue, where they have this, right past the, the Dairy Queen, where the gas station is, sometimes there's a vendor right there in that area. Is that a private location in which the person who owns the, the proprietor of the business would have some type of permission to give that person or entity to sell goods on that spot?
Yeah, so the private property owner would need to provide permission to the vendor, and then they would have to acquire a temporary food concession permit. If they're eating in that area, then it may fall under the purview of a sidewalk cafe, but I suspect more than likely, the food truck does not include a cafe on the premise.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, quick question. So this, this is in particular just to food service businesses. There are other kinds of businesses can participate along the trunk line now. So I remember from DDA last time, a lot of the retail businesses weren't too excited about it. Has that changed at all? And if so, is there anything that needs to be done to kind of get word out or encourage them to take advantage?
Annually, we have very few, if any, retail operations, especially on an MDOT trunk line. Folks have been invited to participate in the street closures from traditional brick-and-mortar retail locations. Part of the problem is they have one employee manning the store at any given time, and they can't operate two locations, one remotely. And so that's been the large reluctance on behalf of the brick-and-mortar retail to participate in any of the street closures, and then that extends all the way into the sidewalk retail stuff, as it's just very difficult to manage outdoor retail space. And so nobody's really taken advantage of that historically.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Before we vote? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll? Clerk Kalinka, please.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2021-022, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas during January of 2021, the city council engaged in goal-setting and budget prioritization exercises with the valuable assistance from facilitator Dr. Jeffrey Bernstein and city administration. And whereas Dr. Bernstein prepared a report titled Ypsilanti City Council Goal Setting Report, which outlines the results of the city council's goal-setting sessions, and whereas the city manager has reviewed the presented, presented report and with city council direction, developed five umbrella goals that incorporate priorities set during goal session process. The goals are as follows: communications and connection, refresh and upgrade city website and functionality, including accessibility for visually impaired, develop comprehensive communication plan, including hiring director, seek governmental partnership agreements with neighboring cities, two, community safety, hire a social worker within YPD for support and crisis intervention, and create mental health response team, improve community policing philosophy to enhance safety of all residents, businesses, and visitors, and eradicate gun violence and shooting, promote community security. Three, structure, commons, allocate funds to repair city sidewalks, continue to upgrade existing park facilities and maintenance, create community warming space. Housing, establish policy for making current housing more affordable to address issues of housing insecurity. Safety, explore new and creative options for increased traffic calming and crosswalk safety in neighborhood and main streets. Sustainability, increase recycling, current levels are about 50% lower than the region. Create resilience hubs. Building, equitably develop long-term vacant sites in the city, including Water Street. For council staff workflow, do a compensation study of non-unit employees, including council, to structure the salary scale and allow for implementation of raises. Explore regional transit and available grant funding. Complete the master plan and sustainability plan and update the parks and recreation plan. Five, council staff development. Develop positive staff council relations, communications, team building, et cetera. Develop a super program with WCC, EMU, and YCS for city and civic work with council and city staff, including admin support for council. C, create framework for organization diversity inclusion through more effective recruiting, staffing, and promotion for city staff. Whereas pursuant to Section 5.02 of the Ypsilanti City Charter, the city council desires to adopt goals, objectives, and budget priorities for 2021, 2022, to provide the necessary direction to the city manager for allocation of resources for fiscal year 2021, 2021, 2022 proposed budgets. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Ypsilanti that the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby adopt the Ypsilanti City Council 2021, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Ypsilanti that the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby adopt the Ypsilanti City Council twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Goal Setting Report as the City Council's Goals, Objectives, and Budget Priorities for Fiscal Year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Be it further resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby direct the City Manager to consider these adopted goals, objectives, and budget priorities during the preparation of the Fiscal Year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Proposed Budgets in accordance with Section five point zero two of the Ypsilanti City Charter.
Wow, and you can take a breath, clerk.
Right.
A deep one.
Good job, Andrew.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I supported it.
All right, thank you. We it's been moved in second. Now we're open for questions, discussion, and who wants to go first?
I do. Mayor, Council, the resolution before you tonight is a compilation of the points that were in the report from Dr. Bernstein. The list is not inclusive, of course, but I did try to pull out the points that I thought Council would actually want as goals, and so I asked that you look over it and amend it as you see fit. But most of those points were taken from the actual report.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Comments?
Mike, I have a comment. I do believe those are all the goals that we agreed upon. I do believe when we were doing goal setting and we saw each other's goals. Where Councilman Wilcoxen had, you know, like um like fun allotments and timelines, you know, and so some of those things, of course, we see the overall direction or the overall goal, but as far as without having, you know, you know, price tags attached to them or priority, whether they're long term, short term, or midterm, I think that's going to develop over as we make some cuts from what we already have, but I think it's a really solid list that we all worked on, staff and council together.
Thank you, and next. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen.
Hi, I sent an email around yesterday about the the rankings in this, and thank you, thank you, Sea Manager McMullin for putting this together. I have questions about this, but but also I wanted to address the the difference in the reports from last year to this year, just in terms of the rankings of these and and the priorities. You know, Mr. Miller went about ranking these differently last year and the year before last than Mr. Bernstein did, and unfortunately, I got the the raw data too late today to to really take a look at it. I don't think it makes a a huge difference, but there's a couple of things that that I think are are further down on on the priorities in the report that didn't get put up here, and I apologize for not having a moment to to consolidate my thoughts on this, but in the connection, communications and connections. You know, I haven't go back and forth between these two documents. I'm looking at the the things that that were ranked higher by by council that didn't make it on the list and and things that are actionable by city staff, and so things like nominate qualified candidates. It doesn't really pertain to staff. It's a high ranking by by council, but it doesn't really pertain to to actions from from city staff. Improved Council Meeting Preparation and Transparency and Communication was not listed, and I'd like to add that to the list. Under communications and connection as section D. So Clerk Kalinga, how do how do I go about doing this? Do this one at a time and then and then move forward with that?
Yeah, you can you can motion these individually.
Okay, I don't think there's a whole lot, but I, as I said, I I haven't had a chance to consolidate my thoughts about this, so.
Mr. Wilcoxen, I think maybe a city manager might be able to answer your question. She's got her hand up.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Wilcoxen, I did look at that one, and that one was not listed because it's also a goal of the Clerk's Office. It's a goal of Clerk Halinga's to improve the council packet and that kind of thing. So I didn't know if that was something that was an overall that would have a budget amount even attached to it. So I I kind of toiled with that one, and so that was the reason I didn't put that in. Mr. Halinga, could you speak to that as well in our discussion? That is one of his goals.
Yes, so this was a a a goal, one of my goals over the 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 past two fiscal years, and this is not something that necessarily would have a a budget amount attached to it. It's really just improving prior to the, you know, the COVID shutdown, I was getting the packet to council the two Mondays prior to allow for enough time for for council to review the material and also have it posted with ample time for the public to review what council was going to be discussing per meetings. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, it kind of got pushed forward or or behind a little bit, so you know, I'm I'm in the process of moving that back up to two Mondays prior.
So would this be a goal for the city clerk is what I'm saying?
Right, I I and I apologize, the the rationale makes total sense. It's just that that since looking at this last night and and sending that email, I hadn't had a chance to go back and look at this to see how that makes any difference, and so what you're saying is that in most cases, the things that were ranked high that were not included in your list are basically things that don't have a budget line or their personal goals of department heads.
More than likely, yes.
All right, thank you. In that case, I rescind the motion that I made. And we'll take a moment to review this while somebody else can have time on the floor.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments regarding the goal resolution? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Wilcoxen, are you done, or did you have something else?
I think this is fine. If certainly during the year, if I have issues with goals that were not listed on here, I'll bring them to attention to the City Manager and City Clerk, and we'll go with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, I want to thank all that had a part in putting together the goal session, Clerk Kalinga for inviting Dr. Bernstein and City Manager. Thank you for pulling all this together in a concise way for the for the resolution. And any other staff that worked on our goal setting sessions. Seeing and hearing no other questions or comments, Clerk Kalinga, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, and thanks to all of council and all staff that participated in the goal setting sessions. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, council, moving forward to the next agenda item, it will be to select council liaison for boards and commissions.
Clerk Kalinga, I just want to let you know that Police Advisory Commission is on that list twice.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Thank you for that heads up.
Does that mean we get two liaisons?
I don't think so. Okay. Did I hear someone? I didn't see your hand. Was it? Okay. Yes, Clerk Kalinga, I was going to point that out, and also I didn't who's I didn't realize we had a liaison other than staff with the Historic District Commission.
Um, yes, I believe that currently is Mr. Jones Chance.
Okay. All right, I just now I just don't ever remember us having one with them before, so but that's fine.
Mayor, I don't, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I don't think we did. I think that was just added when we you know, talked about that a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I don't think we did. Thank you for re helping me remember that. Okay. I did not, as I was looking over this and preparing for the meeting, I did not get any calls or any communications from anyone unless somebody sent me an email that I that's spinning around in cyberspace that did not land in my box that anybody wanted, that didn't like where they were or wanted to change. So that's my first question to council. Is everyone satisfied with the commission they are working with?
I am.
I see lots of nods and head shaking. I would like, who is the planning? Who is the planning representative from council?
So we never settled these matters. We talked about it, but but we never settled on anybody besides what was existing prior to when this first came up a couple of months ago.
Okay, are you, Council, Ms. Simmons, are you the councilperson with planning and ZB at planning? Because I know you were on the Planning Commission before, and I exactly I thought you wanted to continue there. Is that true or no?
Well, I was on the ZBA before, and that was when I was interested in in liaise, you know, being liaison with. And I know there was talk about putting those two together, and I know Mr. Jones Chance had an interest, I think, perhaps. I don't know if I'm not misstating, that he might be interested in, no?
No, you're right.
Yeah, I think he has an interest in that, so and and so I'm open to you know, whatever kind of makes sense in that regard, if it's bundling those together. I think Historic District was something that then like, you know, was talked about, maybe I would do. And my only thing with that one was that it there's I don't believe we have any historic districts in war two, but I'm big on historic preservation, so that's fine as well. So anyway, that's kind of what I recall from that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and when I was looking at them today, my thoughts were to combine ZBA and planning as one. The ZBA does not meet as regularly as planning. So they're not meeting, ZBA does not meet monthly, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
They have monthly meetings, schedule, but but there's not always an agenda. You know, there's not always something on the agenda, so.
Okay, right.
Would it be useful if if I went through the what council liaisons were for each body prior to the election? Would that be helpful?
That would be very helpful.
Yes, it would be. Thank you.
Okay, the Arts Commission was Councilmember Somerville?
And if while you're going through these, can I just ask if the person that whose name you call, if they're satisfied where they are? So come, Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
You happy with the arts?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the ZHDC prior to the election was Mr. Jones Chance. Human Relations was Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown, are you still satisfied with HRC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I I was going a little bit too fast, but um
I'm good with it.
Okay, and then on to planning was Mr. Jones Chance?
Sounds good.
Police Advisory was Councilmember Morgan.
Councilmember Morgan, are you satisfied there?
Yes, I am. Greatful.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation was Councilmember Wilcoxen?
I'm fine with that.
Sustainability Commission was Councilmember Wilcoxen?
I'm fine with that, too.
And then Zoning Board of Appeals was Councilmember Simmons.
Okay, can we give the ZBA along with planning to Mr. Jones Chance? And Councilmember Simmons, are you willing to take HDC?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm fine with you, Mr. Jones Chance. Okay. Job well done. Thank you.
So I have a question about this for and for Andrew. Parks and Recreation Commission always meets on council nights?
That makes it difficult to be the liaison.
Well, nobody could, right? So it's like, you know, so I I can certainly communicate with those folks and I I can do that. I mean, there's other ways to be a liaison besides showing up for all the meetings, but I guess I'll have to talk with them about the about about the scheduling of their meetings, because that this is going to be hard.
I have a question, maybe for Clerk Kalinga or Mr. Bar, either one. Is it proper for a city commission to meet on the same night as council? Can they, can we possibly bring a change there?
Well, Your Honor, it's proper, but it is inconvenient, and if council made it known that they would like a different day, then the commission could probably look at or should look at that and perhaps find something else.
I wouldn't say with with the amount of boards and commissions of the city, it does make it difficult to always schedule around that, but that might be for for Parks and Rec, you might want to speak with the the Chair, Evan Sweet, and then I believe the the staff liaison is Project Manager Westler, so if you'd like to speak with her and see the potential about moving those dates around, they're at the senior center, so I don't know if that conflicts with any of their their programmed events, at least once we get we get back to, you know, having in person.
Ms. Westler's on this call. Ms. Westler, do is it possible that you could you possible that we could switch Parks and Recreation to the second and fourth Tuesdays or the or the second Tuesday or a Tuesday night that's not a regular council night?
Oh, we can speak with them about alternate times. That's been a concern in the past, too, so I'll bring it up with them again and see what we can do.
All right, does that help, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Yeah, that'd be great. I was I was planning to email Ms. Westler and Mr. Sweet to discuss that anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. If you two could maybe try to take care of that, appreciate it. All right, thank you. I see your hand, Mr. Jones Chance.
No, well, Mr. Halinga be sending sending out invitations to be panelists on these, or should we reach out to the board chairs directly?
So I I will make sure that the staff liaisons, at least those that I don't create the meetings for, will be aware to make sure to send you those links. Also, the master board and commission list does have all the staff liaisons and council liaisons included in that, so if you ever have any questions about who you might need to contact, you can always reference that list or send me.
Thanks.
Uh, I see your hand, Mr. Morgan.
Um, is it will we get an opportunity? Because I was talking to different councilmen, councilpeople about commission etiquette, you know, as far as me showing up to different commissions, about, you know, listening. um, offering advice, putting, you know, what, just to get the basis of, uh, our role and responsibility. I would like some pressure, just so I can, uh, play my part, uh, as full capacity without, uh, changing the integrity of the meeting.
Okay, could, um, I think maybe we all could use that. Uh, Clerk Colanga, could you maybe set up maybe an hour or so where we could go through, um, just protocol for liaisons from council? I see your hand, uh, Councilmember Simmons.
So if I, if I could have some clarification of what exactly you're looking for?
Well, a- all I wanna know, like, again, um, I'm a part of the Y-PAC. Um, I think it makes a difference of what if I wanted to go to the HDC and speak for public, a public, like, just a public, um, public, get a public, um, public time, I wanted to talk as a citizen in the Sustainability Commission. Would that sway the outcome of what's going on? Would I be a nuisance if I wanted to sit on the fly on the wall somewhere? Like, wh- what's the protocols? Am I invited to these other meetings? Can I go? Should I not go? So what?
They're public meetings, they're, anyone can attend. You would just only be able to address the commission during public comment.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, even in public comment, would that, and even if that's a, a business, would that, could that be frowned upon? Or could that sway to me, me being a public citizen, talking out?
Oh, can I add on to this, too, uh, Councilmember Morgan? Because I think we're maybe on the same line, because since you and I both came on council at the same time, I feel like that we were discouraged in some training we had from attending, um, these types of meetings, um, so that we wouldn't stifle, um, you know, or influence, um, or pressure, I guess, um, you know, people on commissions and boards. And so, you know, I don't know that I will make my presence, like, at every single one of these meetings, I'll be a liaison, whatever, but I don't know that that makes sense. Um, but, but I don't know, I, I have to connect with these folks. But, but I, I feel like, you know, that was something that was slightly discouraged, and I don't know if Councilmember Morgan, that's kind of what you're angling at?
Yeah, I, I'm saying, I, I just wanna make sure I'm not overstepping and I know, like I said, I won't go to all of them, but if I did, I just didn't wanna, you know, speaking as a citizen, as a councilperson, I know what we say have weight, regardless of we're speaking, from wherever we're speaking. I didn't wanna add or take away from the meeting. I just wanted to know if was that proper, you know?
I would mention Mr. Bar to chime in.
I keep, see your hand, Councilmember Somerville, but Mr. Bar had stepped forward, so can, you come after him, please? Okay, Mr. Bar.
Uh, this is an interesting question, and I wrote an opinion on it back in 2008. At that time, the issue was whether planning commission and whether a councilperson should go to the commission with a personal issue, personal issue. And the answer is clearly no. Uh, there's a, there's something known as the, uh, difference between a commission and the council. The commission is to advise the council, they're only advisory. And so the general rule is it's improper for the council to be on the commission. And it's improper for council to appear before the commission and engage in the discussion. However, uh, this is a free country, and we do have the, the right of free speech, and it's not illegal for council members to appear and observe the, uh, proceedings, and if they wish to, uh, offer comments during public comment. However, the courts generally discourage it.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Somerville, thank you, Mr. Bar. Councilmember Somerville.
I'm just gonna pass, um.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Wilcoxon.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so, um, Anthony Morgan and I had, had discussed this in terms of, you know, what, what is the role of the liaison? What, what are the, the possibilities to go into other meetings, things like that? And, and I told him that the, you know, the, as liaison, you know, for example, on Sustainability Commission, I'm there and Ron Akers is there as the staff, uh, liaison. And, and in that, I'm, I sit and listen to the discussion and offer information when asked. Um, and, or if I see that there's, there's, there's a, a gap in information, I can jump into that. But I, I don't at all try to sway the, the outcome of the discussion. Um, I'm there as a resource and, and not as a participating member in the, in the discussion. Um, I have attended HRC meetings and, and other commission, planning commission meetings, and in those, I sit in the audience and, and that's it. Um, public comments, I, I have given, uh, public comments in a, um, planning commission meeting simply to clarify, uh, information between a neighborhood group and, and the planning commission. But that was not to advance my own agenda, it was just simply to, to, I explained the history. So it, it's, it's a, it's a fine line that we, that we walk in terms of, you know, being able to make public comments in those, in those situations and, and swing the, um, the will of the, the commission. But I think to, to a large extent, I think our commissioners are, are great people and they, they know what they're doing. And, um, will take whatever comment into, um, they wouldn't be swayed by something that I said anyway. So I, I guess that's what I'm saying, but you know, it's, it's, I sat through a number of m- meetings and never said a word, and, and I learned a lot from how, how they operated, so, um, that's all. I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, come, uh, Mr. Morgan, is your hand up? Or did you just not take it down?
I just didn't take it down, I'm sorry, here it goes.
Oh, that's okay. I didn't want to miss you. Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? You're okay, Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah, my, my comment slash question was just related to, like, the origin of, like, where that came from. I just remember, like, it may have been brought up in the past council meetings, and I just wanted to know, like, yeah, where that came from.
Okay, and you got your answer from Mr. Bar? Thank you. Okay, uh, well, we all know where we belong. And, um, missed, we can move on. If there's nothing else on this, Clerk Colanga.
Counsel, the next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, boards and commissions nomination. There are two, uh, nominations for reappointment to the Police Advisory Commission. Uh, Herman Humes, uh, expiring February first, 2024, and Kathleen McCormick, expiring, uh, February first, 2024. And then, uh, to the Arts Commission, Cole, uh, McAtee, uh, expiring February first, 2024. Um, and then the next item on the, uh, agenda is liaison reports for SEMCAG.
Uh, nothing to report, thank you.
Uh, Washinau area transportation set.
We haven't had a meeting since the last meeting, city council meeting we had.
Urban County?
Uh, no meeting.
DDA? No new meeting. Uh, Friends of Rutherford Pool?
That meeting is tomorrow night, so I can give, uh, a brief at the next meeting.
Moving to the next item on the agenda, council proposed business.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, let's start up in the corner, uh, Mr. Wilcoxon.
Um, didn't really have anything planned, but the, you know, the, the proclamation earlier this evening and, you know, the special reports were beginning from, from Chief to Juicy. Have me perplexed in terms of what, what measures we can take. I mean, it, it, you know, the reports of, you know, people's houses getting shot up and people's cars getting shot up, and nobody seemed to know what the, what the motivation is for these things. In some cases, it's, it's pretty clear, but in other cases, it, it seems random, but I know there's, there's something else going on there. And so, you know, the issue of, of gun locks and things like that, you know, are measures that could be taken. But I really had a loss as to what we can do within the community to, to stem the gun violence. And I, I just, I'm, I'm at a loss. It, it bothers me. I, I, I think about people sitting in their homes, you know, in the one case, person putting her grand, grandson to bed and, and having people, you know, shoot up the house. It's just like, you know, for no apparent reason. I don't know what else to say. Yeah, I just find it very troubling, and I, I'd really like to, uh, find some way to, to bring this to a more prominent place in our, in our community discussion, so.
Um, Mr. Wilcoxon, you jumped down into, uh, my comments. So, uh, Mr. Bar, would be, is it possible for us to have a short discussion around this now?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Uh, you jumped right into my, um, and it's been something that's, that I've been going over and over with for, for some time. And I, my thoughts, we need to have, I would like to have a meeting, um, to discuss this whole increase. You know, at first it seems like, and, and, uh, we've talked about, I've talked about it with Mr. Jones' chance and with Mayor Pro Tem. The, um, the gun shooting, that's shootings that have been taking place in, uh, the New Park Ridge. Uh, they happen quite often on the street behind me, down, uh, just a block or so away. And I'm noticing that there's been shootings down at the corner of Hur- Huron and Ha- and, uh, Harriet, Hamilton and Harriet. And even on the, uh, uh, on the other side of town, so to speak, the ones that was, we just got notice of today, the ones that was over on Karen. And, and, uh, Chief Degusti, if you would, show yourself for this discussion, please, so that you can be a part of it. It's so much, uh, it's something that's really, I think, that is, um, that as a city, we have got to get control of this. Unfortunately, people have gotten wounded, but no one has gotten killed. And I agree with you, um, Mr. Wilcoxon, that when I read about the grandmother putting her, her grandson, you know, having to tell him, lay down on the floor, and all of a sudden, I mean, they've got these holes in their houses. Brand new housing development up here at New Park Ridge. And many of the apartments are full of bullet holes, just where people have been shooting. I don't know, I don't have an answer, but I do know that we have got to find an answer. We've got to do something to try to get, uh, take control of this before somebody is actually murdered. So, um, Chief, do you have anything for us? Do you have a solution for us?
Oh, well, Mayor, I, I wish I really did have a solution in my back pocket for this, but it's something that's affecting, uh, all communities across the country, the, the rise in violent crime. I'm sure you've seen on the news, uh, all the major cities are, are seeing it, as well as, uh, you know, also in the suburbs. So, um, there are a lot of things that we can do to try and help it. Uh, one is to reduce the availability. So I can tell you that yesterday we recovered an abandoned vehicle sitting in the street. And when we inventoried it, there was a handgun underneath the seat. It was just sitting there. Every year, we ha- we take reports where people have left guns in their cars, and the car's been burglarized and the gun is gone. Uh, people don't secure their weapons in their homes. That's where these, these weapons are finding their way to the streets. So that's just one aspect. The other aspect is, is, um, you know, we have to do a, a better job of trying to get out in the community and having people talk to us. It's, it's very, very difficult, um, to solve these cases when we show up, uh, like the incident that you're just referencing. Um, and thirty people were, were around and no one knows anything, no one saw anything. And luckily, in this particular instance, one witness gave us some information, um, but it was very vague. So there, there's a lot of components to this. I don't know that there's one singular answer to it. The other piece that makes it very difficult is that in most of these instances, these are influences from outside the city. So there are people that are coming into town, uh, don't live here, don't work here, uh, associate with someone who does live in town. They commit their violent act and then they leave. Um, so again, there's, there's lots of pieces to this puzzle. Uh, I can tell you that the police department's been very diligent in working on this. Um, I just compiled some things, uh, the other day. We took ninety-one guns off the street last year, which is twice as many as we took off the street the year before. So, um, and that, you know, that, those are guns that were recovered, uh, not as part of an investigation. Those are guns that were recovered on traffic stops, warrant arrests, those kinds of things. So we're, we're, we're pushing forward and we're trying to do some things, but it's gonna take, uh, a greater community effort to combat this than just the police department doing something.
Uh, may I ask, what happens to the guns that you confiscate, the guns that you gather up? The ninety-some guns, are they destroyed or what happens to them?
Yes. None of the, it, our, our policy is that we, and I know some places do, but we don't. Uh, they're not, they don't go out to auction or for resale, uh, everything that we have, uh, that we confiscate. Once it's no longer, um, a piece of evidence, it then goes and it actually is melted down.
Good.
Good.
Okay.
Um, can I make a comment?
Oh, you sure may.
Uh, are, are, are we still on, are we having this discussion or are we still in Councilmember Coxon's business?
We're, we're having, his business was.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm in this business, okay.
Okay. And so I asked, I asked permission to have a discussion, because that was also part of my, my comments from there. So we are discussing this issue, yes.
So this is my statement, and, and, and it's, it's convoluted as the issue. However, I think it has to be, it's, it's, it's from multiple perspectives, because as diverse as our city is, with a lot of people from the Middle East and, and, and Asia and, and, and Caucasians and Hispanics, this specific issue, although it, it, it affects the whole entire community when it comes to safety and things of that nature, it's a certain population that's repeatedly affected by it. So we have to get the whole community involved and invested about this specific plight. Because everyone's not experienced in the same thing, not a city at large is, can be deemed unsafe when some of these things happen. But we know certain groups are not, well, again, um, it's terror. Everyone feels the terror of bullets flying and things of that nature. So I'm saying, like, we have to have a localized, specific, um, uh, plan, um, based on the specific issues. Cause I know War Three, I know there's probably shootings in War Three, um, haven't heard many. Um, however, I, I know the issues in the city a- at large needs to be attended to. So what I'm saying is, we have to have real conversations about race, real conversations about how can we get people who are affected by it to buy in to help stop it? Because, again, I don't see, I don't hear about all different demographics running around here doing some of these things. However, the whole city's affected by it. Now, I'm not saying that, um, I just think there's unique circumstances that we have to further discuss as opposed to the community's unsafe. Cause that's, i- it's not a fair statement, and most people who feel certain fears are not the ones getting their houses shot up. Um, and so I, I think it's, 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 it's kinda, it is weird in a way, that's all I'm saying. So I don't know, I'm trying not, I'm trying not to use inflammatory words. However, um, in the city, probably in the last three decades, it's, it's only a certain, same people dying. Now, the city's so unsafe, but the same people are dying. So how can we specifically help these specific group of people within the population do something about this? So I know it's gonna, that's all I'm saying. I, I just think it's gonna take more specific language, specific action, um, from a specific, from everybody to lend to this particular plight. This is not everybody's plight, although it's everybody's fear when things happen. So, um, I just think we have to talk about race and, and equity and, and, and specific, u- unique tactics that are, um, that are, that are, that, that deal with some of these things and not just the community at large.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to join this, this discussion? Mr. Jones' chance?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I don't think Mr. Morgan's comments were inflammatory at all. I mean, it's plain for anybody to see that, that is the issue, and I think we should address it directly. How we do that, I, I think is obviously anybody's guess, because if we knew how to fix it, it would probably already be fixed.
Fixed, yeah.
Um, so I guess we'll talk tomorrow, um, to some more community members. so I guess tomorrow, um, to some more community members in New Park Ridge. I don't know what will come of that. Maybe if there's more frequent person-to-person conversation, we might be able to help um, get more information about what's going on. Um, I don't know how much of it, uh, Mr. DeGuste will be able to use if we get it that way, but, um, it's better than nothing.
Did you say you're meeting with, um, some residents in New Park Ridge?
I will, I will, you know, cause I, I know people personally, but you know, um, I don't know how much that can help the police department if, you know, basically I'm gathering hearsay, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So although we-
Anyone else?
So let me, let me clarify something about information. So we're willing to take any information we can get from any source that we can get it. Um, even if it's not anything that we can use, um, of an evidentiary value immediately, it at least gives us a direction to go in and, and a way to try and figure out how to investigate certain things. But when we get no information at all, it really is difficult to even get started. So if someone confides in you, um, and you know, I've said it before, we have a tip line. Uh, you can call and, you can call it anonymously. Uh, you can send us an email. You can make the email as anonymous as possible. Um, we won't call you back if you ask us not to. Um, but any information we can glean to, to at least get started in a, in a direction of solving a crime, we'll take it.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Simmons, yes?
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, right, can be complicated, and I think it doesn't always involve people who are just within our community. I think as Councilwoman Morgan had said, I mean, I'm a mediator and, and, um, I'm a board member on the dispute resolution, Resolution Center, and they do a lot of peacekeeping and, um, you know, restorative justice practices and whatnot. I mean, I could see where they, a group like that could be of value if there were people who are willing to, uh, be a part of that. And so, um, you know, that could be something worthwhile, but, but, um, anyway, so I don't know. I mean, I, I think it would be interesting to talk with folks at maybe New Park Ridge or elsewhere. Um, you know, because it does seem like there's usually some type of issue that, that, uh, you know, a fight, a verbal altercation, whatever it is. I mean, I think, you know, um, and so there's definitely stuff going on. It's like, how can we help people, young people, figure out how to, um, solve disputes in a different way? That doesn't, you know, involve violence or guns. And, um, you know, there, there's been a lot of success with some of the work that the DRC has done in the schools, um, and, you know, Ipsy and, anyway, it could be something that, that could, could be here, but, but anyway, that's kind of my two cents on that. Could be a good resource. Or there's, I'm sure some other organizations too.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Before we go back to council proposed business?
My, my hand did go up just for one more second. Um,
Oh, okay.
Uh, I wanted to say, um, what was I gonna say? Um, oh my, my time, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can go ahead. Um, I, I lost my train of thought. People making noise upstairs. Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands, um, Councilmember Simmons, we're council proposed business.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, check in with folks about the evaluations for our city clerk and, uh, city manager. So I've gotten a few. Um, so if you could, uh, if you haven't gotten those to me, um, you could maybe try to send them by the end of the week. Um, and, um, city manager, if you want to send me your self-evaluation evaluation, what I'm doing is I'll put the tabulated ones together from all of council, plus the self-evaluation, and we can use that as, as one kind of tool to, um, you know, work through. But, uh, once I get them tabulated, I'll be checking in with, um, Mayor Pro Tem Brown and Councilmember, um, Morgan, uh, to just solidify things and review. And then we can, we bring it to the, you know, go from there for kind of reviewing it as a group. So, um, yeah, so that'd be great.
All right, thank you. Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, I guess mine was, uh, more of a question, really. Um, I am curious about how, um, the community would go about, uh, changing the name of a park. And I don't, I don't know who the correct person to ask about that is, but there is a, um, a resident who's been doing a lot of good things for decades and, um, for, uh, Park Ridge Park in particular. And, um, I think there would be a lot of community support behind it. So I'm curious about how that process works.
Okay, uh, Mr. Myers, could you, would you be the one to answer that?
Uh, maybe, but I, I'm, uh, um, I'm looking into it right now. I got your email, uh, Mr. Jones Chance. I just, I, I don't know the answer to it. And so I'm trying to figure that out. I don't know if we've changed the name of the park, uh, city manager. Are you aware of us ever doing that?
No, only streets. And I don't know if the process would be similar. Um,
Didn't we change the park name?
I think Mr. Barr has some-
Yeah, Mr. Barr's camera turned on, so I feel like he'd be, uh, he, he might know. I don't know.
Well, the city manager is correct. There, we do have some ordinances on naming streets. I don't think there's anything in particular about naming parks. In the past, I'm thinking about the Heffley Park that was by a resolution of city council. And, um, I'll work with Joe. I'll look at it tomorrow and see what I can come up with. But I, I'm sure there is a process if there's, uh, the willingness to consider it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Simmons, you had something on that?
Didn't also, I don't know if it was, uh, a renaming or had been named before, but it was, uh, for a city employee in Ward One. Isn't there a park that was, I don't know if that was named last few years? Maybe it just got new signage and it was a park I wasn't aware of.
It was new signage. It's a tot lot.
Tot lot, okay.
Right, for Cary Mattonly. And that has, that has been Cary Mattonly Tot Lot for,
Okay.
Oh gosh, for decades.
But we have named, we just named that new toy thing that, that's in Frog Island, right? Would, didn't we na- name that?
Yes, we named the, uh, the playground, yeah.
Did we dedicate it or did we name it?
What, it, the playground is dedicated to that playground set inside Riverside Park. So that's an option. If you wanted to dedicate the new playground at Park Ridge in that person's name and get a plaque, that would be a good, um, route to take.
Right, rather than just renaming the park itself. Um, well,
I do think some people are like,
Chance, you're interested in?
Hold into like the Park Ridge name.
He wants to rename the park. So, let's, let's, let's look at, let's look at what it would take and then it will, can come before council and council can decide what they want to do. I do appreciate the, you know, the fact of saying dedicate, you know, um, the playground and the plaque and all. So, okay. Anything else about that?
I just had a question about, you know, how these things got named in the first place, like Candy Cane Park around the corner from my house. This is like, Prospect, Prospect Park is fairly straightforward and, you know, Park Ridge, things like that. It's like Candy Cane. I, 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 you know, is the history of these things written down someplace?
And Park Ridge Park wasn't always a Park Ridge Park. Park Ridge Park used to be Harriet Street Park. So,
There you go.
Uh, Mr. Barr has turned his camera on again. That's an indication he has something for us.
In regard to Candy Cane Park, I believe that was part of the plan when that area, the new College Heights area was planted. The park was named in that plan as Candy Cane Park.
Huh. Okay.
You know, it's interesting, that's, that would be an interesting, um, some interesting research or study, Mr. Wilcox, and just to find out how different places in the city got their names. Yeah, so. Okay, uh, let's drop down to, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
I actually don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Somerville?
Thanks. I do have a few things to just bring up. Um, I brought up during council proposed business, um, the interest that I had in, um, moving forward, um, with talking about changing Washtenaw, sorry, Washtenaw, Huron-on-Cross, getting rid of the slip lane when we work on the road diet plans coming up in the next few years. Um, some conversations have been going on with, um, member, uh, at least one member of the legislature and M.D. and M.D. had indicated that it's something that they would be willing to do and work with us on if council decided that that was the direction that we wanted to go. So, um, I guess this is just me highlighting again just how dangerous that intersection is and that whole strip of Cross Street. So it is something that I'm really interested in moving forward with. So I will be looking, uh, you know, reaching out to other council members to see if anybody will be interested in helping me get this on as an agenda item. Um, and I'll probably loop, um, Bonnie into that conversation as well. Um, I've, and I just wanna say that this, this has been a conversation among community members and families in Ward Three for years, like longer, like before I was on council. Um, so I know that many of them are excited to hear that M.D. is willing to make that change. Um, so just wanted to bring that up and hopefully someone will help me move forward on this. Um, another thing I wanted to loop everyone in on, I'm, I've been in conversations with, um, some housing advocates that are working on reentry solutions for folks returning, um, from jail or prison. And one population, um, that I think that we could get involved with, um, helping is, um, folks who are returning with prior cannabis convictions. Um, we have money set aside through our social equity program to assist with things like this. Um, and I spoke with Reagan, um, over email. Um, so this is another thing that I'm gonna be reaching out to council, uh, other council members about to see if we can get something on the agenda to go further with this. Um, but there's already a third party facilitator. Um, the Washtenaw Housing Alliance would actually be administering this program. Um, it would be a pilot program and I've been, I've been in conversation with Kathy Wyatt about this. Um, there's a group of folks interested in reentry for returning citizens. And in those conversations, it's kind of where this stemmed from. Um, I had mentioned that we have a funding source that we haven't figured out a way to use, but it's meant for, so like, you know, giving, like, providing resources to people who have been negatively impacted by both the war on drugs, but also cannabis prohibition. So, um, just wanted to highlight that. Um, and I will, yeah, hopefully we'll have that on a council agenda soon. Um, and then I also just wanted to bring up, um, I've had a few residents reach out to me over the last week um, about short-term rentals in the city of Ipsy. Um, some of you may be aware that the city of Ann Arbor recently, um, passed a resolution to ban short-term rentals. And, um, I am also interested in exploring that. I don't think that short-term rentals, um, benefit the needs of our community, especially when we have such a scarcity of housing. Um, and, and we're dealing with, um, rental issues in terms of just the overall cost for renters and just not having enough places in the city, um, in terms of our rental stock. So, um, that's also something that I'm currently exploring and will hopefully talk with others about over the next few weeks. And hopefully, um, we can act. I think that it was a good move for Ann Arbor City Council to make. Um, there's always a chance that, um, the state legislature could come in and say that, no, you can't regulate that. But I do think that we should consider going in that direction. And that is all.
Okay. Uh, if I may, I'm willing to support your first two items, um, cause they were on my list also. But, um, on the, um, on Congresswoman Dingle's, um, phone conversation on Monday, um, Minority Leader Lipinski, I think it was she that spoke, uh, and said that, um, short-term rentals, uh, the state legislature is looking at that. There's, I, I don't know if there, there's a bill that's being introduced or they're working on preparing a bill to introduce. So something's going down the pike on that. So we can, you know, check on that from last, yeah.
There was a bill introduced last session on short-term rentals as well. Um, so yeah, I think that some municipalities might be hesitant, but yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Somebody moved, cause everybody shifted on my, my screen. I'm not sure who. Uh, Councilmem, uh, Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Business.
Yeah, I, I only have a, um, I only have a couple of items. Um, uh, the first is, um, I've gotten a couple of emails from a couple of constituents in Ward Three wondering about surveyors around the, um, Boys and Girls Club, and they saw some action going over there. And it was just reminding me that anything that go on with the property, that they would like to have some say on it if we're gonna make some decisions. So I was just wondering, uh, if there's anybody from staff that knows, is, i- i- is that a, are people giving it a real good look to do something with that property over there, or is it just, um, maintenance?
Uh, so we are talking to developers all the time on, on that property. We, um, we do have some people that, that are, that are interested, uh, but we also realize in that, that we did not have a survey of the property. And so the first step to any development, and really anything, is getting a survey to make sure that we know what we own. Um, so there isn't anything that has come before council on that yet, uh, but there are, there, there are multiple people looking at it.
Okay. And when we get, um, property survey, do we have a private surveyor or do we get a second opinion from an outside, uh, company? Because dealing with certain folks in the city, there's been discrepancies in what the city survey said the property was versus, um, what someone else they had surveyed the property.
Yeah, so we are, um, we use our city engineer. They have a surveying division, and so that's who we use. Uh, I, with this property in particular, we know what the GIS layer is, um, which is different than what the survey that the, um, owner of the Gilbert Mansions survey says. And so that's why the survey is just gonna make sure that, that we have not actually got that survey. So when there's a discrepancy between two different surveys, um, that might have to be adjudicated to court. But, but I don't, I don't foresee that happening. I, I foresee that our survey will probably match their survey.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, yes.
I just wanna say, I'm gonna forward you an email. I responded to somebody. I'm gonna send you what I said to them.
Okay.
And, and I've responded to, to somebody as well. So I, I think it's probably the same person.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a comment, uh, city manager? No? Okay. Um, okay.
I, uh, I'm, I'm still, I got two more things.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, um, give a report from the, um, two items from Y-PAC meeting, um, that I wanna share. One is gonna be a, a interview with WEMU David Fair, uh, February fifth at ten-thirty AM. Um, where, uh, he's gonna be, uh, interviewing, I think, um, one of the commissioners from Y-PAC. And then, uh, at the next Y-PAC meeting on February twenty-fifth, um, Eli Savitt, uh, who'll be joining the meeting, talking about some of his new initiatives in the county. And so some people may wanna get online and, uh, and hear about how that affects, um, some of our city business. Um, uh, so yeah, and, and, and last, I just wanna say, uh, just mainly, it's like a thank you. Um, when I look at our budgets, when I, I just wanna say thank you to Reagan and his, uh, and his, uh, team for keeping us physically, fiscally responsible. I wanna say thank you to both chiefs. I know we're through some tough times, um, just making some hard choices. I just wanna thank the staff and council. We've, um, our agendas have been full, um, our plates have, and I think that, um, we've done it with some type of, uh, dignity and, um, some kind of unity. So I just, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to still be here. It's been a lot of work, um, in twenty-twenty. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you. And, um, that concludes my city business.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Morgan. Appreciate your comments and not just from you, but from all of council, uh, tonight. And thank you for, um, for joining, for council, for that discussion that we had on, uh, the gun activity that we have going on in the city. And, uh, let's all just continue to think about how we can uh, address, um, address that. Uh, want to say thanks to, uh, the police, fire, and to the DPS, um, staff that I understand that the vaccine was made available to, uh, these departments and that they have been vaccinated. Am I correct? Did I get the correct information?
At Fire, not everyone. We do have people that have taken the vaccination, but not everyone. There are still some people who are skeptical.
Likewise, at the police department, uh, we had about ten people go through, uh, the first round so far, scheduled for the second round next week, and about, uh, seven more people have signed up for, uh, what's coming next.
All right, thank you.
Will be about sixty percent.
Department of Public Services, the vaccines have not been made available to our staff as of yet. The last timeline we looked at put us somewhere in potentially April. So we've already pulled our staff. We're keeping tabs on the health department. And when it becomes available, we will make sure we let everybody know.
Okay, thank you. I had gotten the information that those three departments had, but if, I can understand if it hasn't been made available. Okay. Those were pretty much the things. I do want to make mention that Mr. Jones, Chance, Mayor Pro Tem, Brown and myself, we are planning a town hall for February the twenty, February the twentieth. And that town hall will be focusing on the vaccine and helping to dispel some of the questions, the mysteries and some of the questions about hopefully by then we'll have some questions, some answers on some of the disparity in the distribution of the vaccine. Also to be able to dispel some of the fears of the vaccine. Dr. Ovita Fuller will be the main person that will be focused on this, on this town hall. It will be, although we're focusing on Ward One, it will be open to anyone in the city or vicinity that would like to like to participate. Doctor, for those that don't know her or know her name, Dr. Ovita Fuller is a virologist and has been for some time at the University of Michigan Medical School. Back in the eighties and nineties, she spent a lot of time working on HIV and became quite quite the expert on that and traveled into Africa and several other locations around the country. And she's been on top of this COVID virus since it first appeared. And I've sat in on a couple of her presentations. And that was before the vaccine. She was also a member of the FDA Advisory Council that sat in to approve the emergency use of the vaccine. So like, like I said, she's she's quite an expert. She knows what she's talking about. So if other council people would like to start, you know, talking that up amongst your constituents so that we can have a good turnout. Because there are questions and some fear about the vaccine all over in every amongst all different people. So we could work on that. And I'm going to stop there for tonight.
Okay, council, next item on the agenda is communications from the city manager.
I have none tonight.
The next item is communications, just a, the HTC twenty twenty report. And then we'd be on to adjournment.
Okay.
Also move for an adjournment.
Is there support?
Yep, support.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Somerville. Hey, we did it. Yes.